I'd like to open the Bristol, Virginia City Council meeting for May 8th, 2018. Please take a moment of silence with me, please. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll keep my comments brief. We're at an important juncture of the budget process tonight is the public hearing. So if you need to sign up to speak, the sign up sheets were in the back. If you forgot, let the city manager know and we'll get you on the sheet. Before we get started, just let everybody know, everybody's gonna have three minutes for public comment. If you do have a group, designate a person for the group to speak on behalf of the group. Keep everything professional, no vulgar language, no direct comments at any particular individuals. This is public comment, so there won't be a question and answer between council and members of the public, but we do want to hear what your thoughts are. This is the important part of the process, to hear the community's input on the budget. After this, we have the first reading, the second reading, and then we approve it before June 30th. So with that said, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Good afternoon, everyone. Does anyone hear me if I stand out in the way to the line? Anybody else? All right, I'll see here. I want to give a quick overview in case some of you weren't at the last meeting on April 24th during the presentation. This is an abbreviated presentation compared to what I gave a few weeks ago, so if you can just bear with me here, we can move through this relatively easily and painlessly. First, I want to discuss the revenues. And you can see from our 2017-18 year, which current year we're in, to this upcoming year, our revenue is being projected to be down a little over half a million dollars from local sources. And your local sources include real estate taxes, restaurant and middlest taxes, and taxes of that nature that we have actual control over within the city. Our total revenue for the Commonwealth has increased a little over half a million dollars. Our federal government revenue has increased by $88,000. And the total revenue for the city operations in fiscal year 18-19 projections, $51,594,173, which is a $93,000 increase from this fiscal year budget. If we look ahead, this is our capital projects. Total revenue from our local sources from 17-18 is $33,000. 18-19, there will be no revenue from local sources for capital funding. Total revenue from the Commonwealth is down by $1.2 million to $6.4 million. Total revenue from federal government has increased by $3.8 million. And other options, financing sources, has decreased by $157,000. So total revenue for city capital projects in fiscal year 18-19 will be $11.6 million, which is an increase of $1.7 million over this fiscal year. Expenditures for this upcoming year in 17-18 are total expenditures for $67.3 million. Fifty-one and a half million of that was from the city's general fund. And you can see in the projected for 18-19, that is an increase of $93,000 compared to last year's general funding expenses. Capital project fund increased by $1.7 million. And our solid waste fund was a decrease of $315,000. And our total expenditures for the city, $68.8 million. This is our debt service as it stood prior to February 2018. You can see in 2018, our debt service was a little over $5 million, which is really $5.3 million. The same for 2019. In 2020, it increased slightly to around $7 million. And in 2021, that was our year, major weight here for the city, was a $20 million debt service payment that was due. And then decreased to a little over $10 million in 2022. Jumped back up again to around the $14 million in 2023. And in 2024, it leveled out again. However, you can, based on our city revenue, you can see that the $20 million debt service payment in 2021 would have been relatively difficult for the city to have made in that fiscal year. Now, let's look ahead. This is our debt service payments for the next seven years. In 2018, our debt service will be $4.54 million. In 2019, $4.85 million. In 2020, $5.97 million. In 2021, $6.22 million. In 2022, $6.72 million. 2023, $7.22 million. And then finally, in 2024, this will be the highest debt payment, is $7.72 million. And that debt payment stays that amount until roughly 2024. As you can see, there's a significant increase in our debt service payment over the next several years. And that's what this budget that we are presenting, that I presented to council, is in preparation for. We have significant revenue made up in order to make up for this increase in debt service payment. But with the refinancing that happened this past January and February, we took care of a significant portion of the large debt service payment in 2021 by that refinance. And our timeline moving forward, this Saturday at City Hall, we will have a budget workshop that begins at 9:00 a.m. We anticipate the first reading of the budget documents on May 22nd. And then the second reading will be on Tuesday, June 12th. The only date that is not subject to change at this point is the May 12th budget workshop. The other dates are subject to change depending on how the workshops progress. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from council? All right, with that said, we'll move on to the regular agenda items. First item, considered public hearing regarding proposed FY 2018-2019 budget. So hereby, open that meeting. Meeting is hereby open. Staff report. All right, we have several people signed up for public comment. Remind everyone, when you come to the podium, you've got three minutes roughly. The city manager will have a clock up behind us, so he'll let you know when your time's up. State your name, your address, where you live in the city. And again, let's keep the public comments very factual and very professional. And we'll open it up with, the first person I've got here is Shawn Stats.
Mr. Mayor, may I say that if there are any specific questions that members of the public audience, we still don't have access to the floor or the recommendation that we want to have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have the excuse?
Yeah, we can go restroom. Let's go to the restroom.
I'm Shawn Stats, 105 Oak Crest Circle.
Is the mic on?
Can y'all hear me? Yeah, y'all can hear me now. I'd like to thank the council for the way that you conducted the last meeting, first of all. And particularly for taking the time to educate those of us in attendance of the totality of the financial situation. It really gave many of us a much better understanding of what's happening in our city. And it was for this reason that Langley Shazer and I decided to make the video, breaking down our financial situation to the best of our ability in as small a time as possible to post on social media in hopes of educating as many of the residents here as possible. The responses were far beyond what either of us expected. Not only did the message spread like wildfire, but more importantly, it sparked an overwhelming amount of constructive discussion about what our city can do to bounce back from this situation. The call of the video was to stop talking about the problems and start working together as a community with our leaders to find solutions. And the community has answered that call. And on behalf of the people of this city, I want to say to you that there are more people aware, interested, and willing to do whatever it takes to move forward than there ever has been in my lifetime. The recommendations given are too numerous to begin to cover in these few minutes, but we will continue combing through the comments online to bring a list of the recommendations to the budget workshop on Saturday. The consensus of the people has been clear, though. The people of this city believe that there are many alternative ways to move forward that will make different areas of our city more efficient without taking any funding away from our children's education. And in fact, may lead us to a place where we're able to provide even more for them as we move forward, which should be the very top of our priorities. The people also have many ideas of how to deal with our drug problem, crime problem, and the very real issues of relapse and recidivism that are causing those issues to continue despite our lack of control. And I'm more confident than ever that if you will consider and act on the things that we as a community are proposing, that over time, we can not only rise back financially, but also do what it takes to make sure that our future generations here do not follow our footsteps in regards to our financial recklessness and moral decay. And I just want to say to the community as well, that it's going to take for us to continue being involved like this. Like, I'm so proud of the city the past couple of weeks, just seeing how everybody's come together. And the things that everybody's laid, you know, brought to the table. Because honestly, up until now, all you've heard is people complain and, you know, bash decisions that were made. And none of us are happy with the state that we're in right now. But I just want to say that I'm proud of the city for how everybody has come together. But we gotta continue to do this. We can't leave the burden on just the city leaders. We as a community have to continue this fight and to work together with them if we want this place to rise and be, rise to its full potential and be what it can be, especially for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Langley Shazer.
Langley Shazer, 409 West Mary Street. So as Shawn stated, the response from our video was well beyond our expectations. I'd like to take a moment and thank everyone in the community for their ideas, their input, and for being respectful of each other, as well as our city leaders as we start talking and having these discussions. It's been my opening experience, and it certainly gives me hope that the community can come together and we can all work together to find some solutions. I think that Bristol is facing a very unique opportunity that we can simultaneously work toward long-term solutions for our current dilemma, as well as lay the framework for future programs, cooperatives, and opportunities. They could be social, educational, as well as economical as well. And we can be on the front end of positive change for the future of the city of Bristol. The community has heeded the call for action with a multitude of suggestions and proposals. And I hope that the council not only takes these suggested alternatives seriously, but also works through them and investigates them thoroughly to determine their viability. I would also respectfully request that the council be transparent with regards to why particular ideas could or could not work. This will give the community an opportunity to gain further insight, as well as to make adjustments. A proposal may or may not work in this instance, but could be applied elsewhere. Shawn and I will continue to engage the community for input and continue to assist in any way that we can to get more people involved in the decision-making process to assist you all. So let us continue to work together with open minds and to address the current state and the future state of Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person on the list looks like Caitlin Ball. Caitlin Ball.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Ball, I live at 327 Elmo Street in Bristol, Virginia. I'm 12 years old, I'm in 7th grade, and I go to Virginia Middle School. Choir is very important to me, and so is band, cosmetology, sports, and while I could keep going, but I don't make y'all, I don't want to make y'all bored with all the stuff that is important to me and a lot of people. Choir gives me something to look forward to every day. Without that, I wouldn't want to go to school. It gives our minds a break from science, civics, math, and reading. It relieves stress. I am active in being informed and helping our community. I could thank Ms. Cross for that. Thank you, Ms. Cross. Ms. Cross inspires me to do my best. I email my politicians, I do what I can to make our community a better place. So I am here tonight to help the current students and the future students. You guys don't get that we are family at the school, and no matter what, we will stick together. I'm not a part of band, but I will help the band students because they are part of my family. We will use singing, playing instruments, and drawing in life more than math and science. These are skills we need in life. I love all my teachers at my school, and to think they might lose their jobs makes me sad. I'm so glad these teachers care about us. My parents chose the school system for a reason. They know these teachers will care about us and fight for us. You don't know how much courage it takes to speak in front of y'all this evening. I hope this helps you make the right decision, which is to let us keep the money to help fund these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Melissa Garrett.
Hello, city council. My name is Melissa Garrett, and I live at 224 Robin Circle. I'm here to express my concerns for this city. I am a lifelong citizen of this city. I went to Stonewall Jackson, Virginia Junior High, and Virginia High School. So I have seen the demise of this city in the past couple of years. I have spent the last 17 years in this school system with both of my daughters. My oldest daughter, Taylor, graduated in 2015. Next year, she graduates from college. The sad part is, she will not be returning to Bristol after graduation. She has made it her mission to never come back. My youngest daughter, Kylie, still has three years left here at Virginia High. If you cut the budget on the schools, it will affect her a lot. Because of her academics, sports, and clubs will be cut or the funding will be low, which means smaller chances of getting into the college that she wants to go to. If it hadn't been for these opportunities with my oldest child, she would have never been able to go to college. Because my family does fall into that 87% of the poverty group. Thank the good Lord, she received academic and cheerleading scholarship. I pray my youngest will have, will have the same opportunities. It would be awful if she spent her whole life working and playing to have it all taken away. The schools already fundraised to the max. I haven't gone one month of this year without fundraising for at least one, sometimes two and three sports or activities. Trying to get businesses to sponsor or contribute in Bristol is like pulling teeth. Prime example, the cheerleaders have to sell ads for, for the football program. We can't get businesses to do it anymore. They, they tell us no. City council, I'm not here to rant or to play the blame game. I am here with some suggestions. Let's partner up with the high school. This school has many tournaments, competition, debates, and all. Help advertise it. Bring in more people into this town and see what all that we have to offer. Two, at the last city council meeting, there was brought up about the jail over population. Why can't we give these inmates some kind of skill for them to have when they get out? Partner up with the trades business. Give them the skills and teach them to where that when they do get out, that they will not become a repeat offender, that they will have something to fall back on. Number three, there was talk at the last meeting, sorry. Number four, we need more festivals here. We used to have the Autumn Chase Festival, that went all weekend long. Now we don't, we have just rhythm and roots. Let's bring in more activity to where people can enjoy and explore this city. But until everyone works together, not just city council, school board, and citizens, nothing's gonna work.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Mr. Mayor, yes, time is up.
I'm sorry, I'm done.
That's okay.
Thank you all.
Can we do something about the acoustics in this place? Can somebody, I don't know if the audience is hearing this, but I'm hearing double back here. I'm hearing Korean or something like that, or some kind of foreign language, because it's so much feedback here. Maybe the school budget certainly needs to have acoustics done correctly in an auditorium at Virginia High School, because this is nothing but feedback, it's aggravating, you can't hear, okay? I mean, this is ridiculous.
I think maybe don't stand as close to the mic when you come in.
Sorry.
But that's okay.
I mean, that's awful, that's awful.
Our next person on the list, Rick Watts.
Rick Watts, 1128 Massachusetts Avenue. Over the past two weeks, I've had the opportunity to talk to a lot of the people in this room about the budget, the state of the city, everything that's going on. And there's an overriding message, we need to save the city. We need to find a solution that's gonna help us fix things. And I believe that everybody here has that, that same thing in mind. I don't believe that we all have the same way of getting there, but I think we all have the same destination at the end. But we have to ask ourselves, if the goal is to save the city, why? What is the point? The point is for the kids. The point is for our future. The point is, you know, for the families. We can't cut our way to prosperity. You know, sure, we can get by a budget here, a budget there, but in the end, we have to grow as a city. And that's gonna mean bringing people in, buying homes, expanding a tax base, bringing in revenues that we don't currently have. To do that, I mean, if you look at any list of why people move into a certain area, it's jobs, crime, and schools. Those are the three areas that anybody's gonna look at before they move into a new area. So for us to take the money away from the schools that was given to us by the state is, is just taking away one of those three pillars that is gonna help us attract, you know, additional people to this area. And it seems like the cuts to the school are being based primarily on the additional money coming in from the state to help compensate that, so it doesn't look like a cut. But I find it hard to believe that we're gonna be in a better place a year from now. And then when that state money goes away, and it's not there available for us, where are we gonna find the money to replace what we're cutting to save right now? Like, what we need are things in the budget that are gonna be sustainable over time, whether it's, you know, asking why the city of Bristol is in the business of owning a golf course to, you know, some of the different suggestions that are being made, you know, by the community. But I think the overriding message that you keep getting from the citizens over and over is, there are better places to cut than education. That's the last place that the city's looking for the money to come from.
Thank you. Next person on the list, Randy Alves.
My name's Randy Alves, I live at 127 Terrace Drive, Bristol, Virginia. Just here to talk about the budget a bit. As a school board, we were challenged probably a year or so ago to, to find a way to build a school within our budget. We did that with the budget as it was. You know, we did, we haven't asked for increased funding. You know, we, I think the whole community, you guys agreed when the presentation was made to us, that the school system can be an economic driver for our community. You know, as already been said, you know, folks, folks look at your, look at our schools, how they perform, the shape of the buildings. When they wanna move a family here, if someone's gonna move a business here, they will see that you're investing in education to get in a workforce, that the students come out trained to work. And that, and that's what we wanna do. Quite simply, the importance of our budget being funded at what we asked is for the construction of a new school. When the, when the financial numbers were put together for that, it was based, it was based on that funding level. I know that the budget's a working document, and it can change, but the beginning number is what's important for the financiers of this project. You know, we've had two firms put in a proposal, and they paid good money to, to wanna build and construct a school in this city. But quite frankly, they're a bit nervous. And I, I can understand why. You know, I know the budget's flexible. I know that if we're short, we could come and ask for more, but we're not gonna do that. We want, we want to be funding what we ask for. That's what we thought we were getting when we started the process for, for new school construction. We can't pile, we can't take kids from one school, our oldest school, and pile them in the rest of the aging buildings that we have. We've talked about kicking the can down the road and other things, that y'all have an opportunity not to kick this can down the road, and I would urge you not to do that. Thank you.
Next person on the list, William Barrett.
Councilman, my name is William Barrett, I live at 417 Meadow Drive. I came here to discuss with you today the budget that is proposed for the education system of Bristol. I am, well, I just finished my freshman year at Virginia Tech, and I've been in public education at Bristol for around six years. I started at my 7th grade at Virginia Middle, and then I came up through Virginia High, and now I am attending Virginia Tech for a bachelor's in nano-science. I just came to talk to you today about how decreasing the budget for an education system is not wise in this age of information. In this day and age that we live in, putting computer skills down on your resume is a waste of a line. People are, need to have these basic skills such as word processing, Excel, any computer skill, and they also need to have the education necessary to use that. So in my field, we take physics, mathematics, biology, almost everything you can think of, in order to cram together in this field. Without Virginia High's education, I wouldn't have been able to do this nearly as successfully as I did. With the robotics program I went into, I was able to travel to Washington DC for the National Math Festival. This would not have been possible if not for the funding that the school's given. With this age coming and, and it's just keep going, it's foolish to try and think that not giving our children the best education is not the way forward. It is the way to make sure that more jobs get started in Bristol, it is the way to make sure more kids come back to Bristol, more highly educated kids, kids ready to start businesses. It's, it's the only way to do this. With the band, it processes the way that kids can take a break. With robotics and other sports, it allows kids to grow in whatever field they wish as they go to college in order to dominate in the engineering field or the sports profession. It's just not possible for these kids to do it without a budget that allows them to have all the education that they want. And so... And so with the decrease in budget, you're going to see a drop in programs being offered at Virginia High. A drop in programs means I wouldn't have been able to compete in TSA and FBLA where I learned numerous coding and engineering skills that have helped me throughout college right now. And so without all these skills, I may have dropped out, flunked out of college, come back to Bristol, may have started on whatever benefits I could get a hold of and just not have been a benefit to the city. So as you can see, hard work in this day and age is not, is almost comparable to intellect. And if we drop the school funding, then intellect will drop as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. First, I need to apologize for a large portion of my statement at the last meeting. I did not intend to defame Superintendent Perrigen in my presentation of the facts as I understood them. Due to later refining questions by others, I found that some of my details were incorrect. I did not have the opportunity to correct my statement at that time, but I apologized on social media right away and in person to Mr. Perrigen immediately afterwards. That's as far as I'll go with that because of time. In my meeting with people over the last few months, I've had a lot of good discussions. One thing that came up is that the current city policy banning commuter use of city vehicles outside the city limits does not seem to be enforced, which costs the city in fuel and maintenance. Another thing that came up was that the proposed budget seems to have a $4 increase in the garbage collection fee, and I was wondering if this is correct.
That is correct.
Okay. One of Superintendent Perrigen's recommendations at the meeting last time was to raise fees so that solid waste will no longer be a drain on the city. Even in this budget, it still is. A quick calculation shows that a $3 additional increase in the garbage collection fee appears to be able to make solid waste break even. And with a $4, even with the $4 existing increase, this would bring the new rate to $25, which granted, it would be difficult on some people who in some cases do not know that there is a $10 discount for those who are seniors or disabled. This is still less than commercial garbage collection rates in the county and other areas that need commercial collection, and that could still be reduced later when contracts come up for renewal. And that's possibly one way that we would be able to cover some of these needed reductions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of, is the microphone on? Can you hear me? Now you can. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I live at 526 Euclid Avenue. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol. I pay taxes. I'm a property owner. Whose back is going to carry the load? Whose back is going to carry the load? As this budget process moves along, there is a core fact that should always be kept in front of you, and that is that the main purpose of any city is for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. The education is required by the state of Virginia and supported and required by the city of Bristol, Virginia. Whose back is going to carry the load? We're talking about police, fire, public works. If I have a, God forbid, if I had a fire tonight, I would not call the superintendent of schools. I would call the fire department. If I went out here and had a holdup at my car, I would not call Rhythm and Roots. I would call the police department. Whose back is going to carry this load? Now, I think one of the most important things to remember is this city is multifaceted. There are many segments that make up this city, and we cannot just focus on one segment. It just doesn't work that way, folks. If the citizens in this room who own houses, and there are several of us here who do, if our houses are not paid for and our cars are not paid for, if we were in the same situation that this city and this city council is in as I speak, the cars would be repossessed, the houses would have been taken over by the banks and sold at auction, and you might be without a job. That is the comparison, folks. That's where we are. That's where we are. Now, I've debated about a few other comments that I would make tonight, but I have decided against most of them, but I will say this. Quite frankly, I have heard some of the most ridiculous comments I have ever heard in my entire life in the last two weeks. And I heard these same comments 40 years ago when I first started coming to council meetings. They repeat themselves. The wheel tries to keep reinventing itself.
Got to wrap it up.
All right. I think that the school system, it is absurd to think that this city council or any other does not like children and therefore wants to cut the budget. I hear, 30 seconds. I think it's a ridiculous statement.
Time's up, Ms. Marney.
Please, sir. 30 seconds.
Time's up, Ms. Marney. Time's up. Thank you.
Trying to keep our bounds on time. Ginger Fleener.
Is this okay for everybody up there? Can you hear me okay, not echoing or anything? My name is Ginger Fleener. I live on 239 Sherwood Road. I've lived there going on nine years in November. I have attended a couple of these. Of course, one, the first one that I had attended with you guys was more or less, I'd never been to one and you voiced your opinion is what I was told, so that's what I did. Leading up to this moment, the worst thing somebody can give me is time to think. That's the worst thing anybody can give me. I've had time to think since the last meeting, and I've come to one conclusion about every meeting that I've been to, which was regardless of how much the community says, how much the community stands up for what they believe in, it's not going to make a difference. Because by the time you all get around to the community, you've already got it set in stone that what will be, will be, and there's nothing that anybody can do about I find that very discouraging. It bothers me so much because I will be the first to tell you, when the whole closing down schools, building a new school came up, I was very irate and completely against it. And I'm sure some of you remember the first meeting about that and so forth. Now, I would much rather have that school built and the kids have a safe place to go and keep the teachers that are here in this area before they leave. I think that the teachers in this area are some of the best teachers you could ever find. They're sweet, they're caring, and they love these children. The city of Bristol, growing up when I was a little girl, my favorite place to go was riding down Euclid Avenue. I loved it. I thought it was the most beautiful place ever. Now, when I ride down the road, I think to myself, I've just got so many more yards until I'm on Tennessee side. Because of you guys, I do want to say this. From the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to my husband and getting me back to Tennessee side. So hopefully, Lord's willing, nothing happens, by 2020, we will be on Tennessee side. There's an old saying that my grandmother used to say, "A hope floats and poo sinks." And unfortunately, this city is sinking and you all aren't doing anything about it because you're not listening to what people have to say. And it's very, very wrong.
Next person is Dr. Keith Perrigan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of city council. Thank you for listening to the public share our priorities about local government, not just tonight, but for the last two Tuesdays. We are blessed to live in America where the people have a voice to a representative government and we are not at the mercy of dictators, monarchs, or oligarchs. No one on this council caused the financial mess that we currently face. You should all be commended for being courageous and willing to find solutions. The decision to refinance our debt was a good one and bought some time to allow our city to develop plans for revenue generation. As you know, the first annual payment for the refinanced debt will be here before we know it. However, I don't believe that we can cut or tax our way to financial stability. We must develop economic growth that can be sustained over time. So please allow me to share a few facts, many of which you are already aware. Number one, the average age of our elementary schools is 61 years old. The oldest was built during the Franklin Delano Roosevelt administration. It will be at least 20 years before our city has the debt capacity to finance a new school through traditional means. That was number two. Number three, if we wait those 20 years, it will cost more then and will max out our debt limit again. Number four, in 20 years, we will also be in need of major renovations, at the least at Van Pelt Virginia Middle and Virginia High School. Number five, those are big cans to kick down the road. Number six, the city currently spends 13% of their budget on pre-K through 12 education, which is the lowest percentage of any locality that I can identify. The next lowest, to my knowledge, is Radford, and that's at 22%. Number seven, of 132 school divisions, our local per pupil contribution ranks in the bottom 20. Number eight, our teachers on average are among the lowest paid in the region, state, and nation. And finally, number nine, you would not want to use any of those facts on an economic development brochure. Bristol, Virginia Public Schools wants to be your economic development partner. We want to offer CTE programs that can be agile enough to provide the certifications that businesses desire, like the partnership we've built with Electro Mechanical. We want to offer cybersecurity classes because there's a need of more than 20,000 people to fill cyber jobs, and there is no reason that Bristol can't fill that void. We want you to continue to share that we are one of the best communities for music education in the nation on your brochure. We want you to boast of your accredited schools on your brochure. We want you to take potential leads on a tour of our new 21st Century Learning Center. We already have the best staff of any division in the Commonwealth, and we want to pay them what they're worth so that we can keep them and recruit more. We want to be your economic development partner as we share in the belief that education is an investment and an opportunity, not an obligation or an impediment. Therefore, I ask that council follow the recommendation of your auditors to work toward paying your solid waste expenditures with solid waste revenues. This would allow you to fully fund our reasonable request of $6.9 million in local appropriation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of city council and citizens of Bristol, Virginia. My name is Stephen Davis, 20 Tracy Street. It was not my intentions to speak this evening, but after listening to so many people and understanding what I've heard, I do believe I have something to offer. I want to thank Sean and Langley, first of all, for enlightening me as to what's going on. There's a phrase that was used, "Make our children job-ready and not jail-ready." I'm a product of the public school system, though I was not born and raised in Bristol, Virginia, and choices that I made led me to be a repeat offender. Today, I work with those that I call returning residents, those who have been away from their respective community for a period of time due to incarceration, confinement, rehabilitation. When we speak of rehabilitation, that means to be put back into a former state. But if you cut the budget for the schools, our children won't even be habilitated, so when they're rehabilitated, they'll be put right back into the same state that they were when they found themselves incarcerated, and our recidivism rate will increase. I myself, as a repeat offender, and as I said, working with those that we call returning residents, have made a decision to better myself. Many people want to be better. Our children want to be better. Those that I deal with, they want to be better, whether better citizens or better criminals, but they all want to be better. Today, I find myself having graduated college, working on my bachelor's, my master's, excuse me, in human services, addiction and recovery because opioids are running rampant in southwest Virginia. If we cut these programs, then our children will be those victims that we will be trying to help on the other end. So if we don't want to make our children jail-ready, then we should keep the budget and find another means to work with and achieve the goals that we are achieving. If the school budget is cut, then the jail budget must be increased, plain and simple, because these are the individuals. We talk of our children being our future. I'm here to tell you that our children are our present, and we need to work with our children currently. Finally, I would like to share with the council, thank you for taking the time to hear myself and those like me express our concerns. I know you're in a very tough position, and I believe that we can work together and work this situation out because we all have something at stake here. I have a daughter who is in the ninth grade, never once heard her talk before about school budgets. She said, "Can we move? If they cut the budget, they're going to take the classes away, and I'm trying to go to college. Can we move to the county? Can we find a place to go?" I thank you for your time, and I hope that we will be able to work this situation out.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. City Manager and members of city council. I'm Anthony Farnham, and I live at 30 Brandon Lane. I'm a property owner here in the city, a landlord, so anytime the budget comes up, it definitely directly affects me when one of the items that could be in the budget is an increase in property taxes, which I'm glad that's not something that we're talking about now a whole lot. I have two direct questions. And first is, I understand our yearly debt service, our payments we make, and I understand that those are going up over the next few years. Can you give us an idea of what our total debt is? I know it's roughly 90, 100 million, and I understand if, you know, we don't have the exact numbers, but, and what was it last year? What's it this year? What's it going to be next year? How much of that debt are we paying down each year?
At the moment, the debt is roughly 180, $80, and depending on, depending on infrastructure, I can't give you an exact number. If I was to bring it up, I could give you that, that schedule in the next few days.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, let me ask you, though, you're not including the landfill. When you informed him, landfill's not included in 108 million dollars, and that's 20 million dollars. Am I wrong about that, sir?
The debt, 108 million, unfortunately, the debt is in 108 million.
Okay. And is that, what is not included? Tell him, what's not included in that?
Well, in terms of debt, it's, it's.
The revenue bonds, it's IDA, $30 million? The revenue bonds, it's IDA, 30 million dollars?
That is a separate book.
That's a separate book, okay? So they're talking 140 right there, sir. 140, that we are responsible for. And God knows how much other. So when he says 118, that's a joke. That is a lie. That's told and perpetuated to people. We have no borrowing capacity left.
Let's keep it on task, Karen.
Realistically. And we have 32 million in revenue bonds that we passed off to IDA so we could get this fall swing going, just so you know, okay? So we're talking 140 million dollars.
My second question is, and it's definitely something everyone's been talking about, from the last presentation, the last meeting, the $300,000 cut to the school system. But I wanted to ask real quick about another slide that was brought up in the last presentation. There was an increase from the state to the school system. I think it was roughly $948,000. Is it a fact? Is it accurate to say that even with this $300,000 cut, with the increase from the state, that the school system will actually have more funding this year than they had last year?
That is a very strange statement. They will have more funding. The issue that the school system has is that the state funds more sure than local funds.
Okay. And I know I'm out of time, but I'll be really brief. I think at the very end of the last meeting, Ms. Marney made a comment and it was really crowded, but I think some people had left because it was at the very end and I thought a lot about it. And I think it's very important for everyone here in this room and every citizen of Bristol to understand that when the falls began, none of you guys were here. None of you guys were up there. When the landfill started, none of you guys were up there. When the jail was built, like the size that it is, none of you guys were here. So all of you guys came later and are trying to do your best to help us out. So that being said, I appreciate your efforts and appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. With that, has anyone else signed up at all? That was the last person on the list.
That's it.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Next item matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. I don't see anyone signed up for non-agenda items at all. So with that said, we will adjourn the May 8, 2018 city council meeting.